Good evening, everyone. We want to call the January fourteenth, twenty fourteen meeting, twenty fifteen meeting, sixteen meeting. This is going to change. The Pickens County Board of Education to order. We want to welcome everyone. It's wonderful to see you this evening. It's always nice to have a crowd here. If you would join me in standing for the invocation and the prayer.
Dear Heavenly Father, we thank you for this day. God, we thank you that you've given us health, Lord, to see another year. God, we ask that you'd help us this year, Lord, in all of our decision making. God, lead us, guide us, and direct us in all things that come before us. We ask these favors in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
Praise be to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I understand that we want to amend the agenda. Do I have a motion to amend?
I'll make a motion if we amend the agenda to put the boundary line agreement in item thirteen.
So it will become thirteen and word comments then will become fourteen.
Right.
So you're making a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor? We also will need a motion to approve the agenda as amended.
I make a motion. Go ahead. I make a motion we approve the agenda as amended.
Okay.
I'll second.
All right. Thank you. So we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor? If you would signify by raising your hands. Thank you. Next on the agenda, at the beginning of the new year each year, we elect a board chair, and that is next on our agenda, is the selection of our school Board of Education Chair for 2016. I'd like to open the floor up for nominations.
Superintendent, I would like to nominate Mike Coward.
We have the nomination of Mike Coward. Do we have any other nominations? Okay. All right. So we have Mike Coward, who has nominated as board chair for 2016. All in favor? If you would signify by raising your hands. Four. And...
All standing.
You don't have to get a second.
Right.
So we have four, and we have one extension. And I am turning this over to you.
You did a good job.
No. I had fourteen down in my paper, so I know it's sixteen.
Okay. Next will be the selection of vice chair. Do I have any nominations for vice chair?
I nominate Delaine Lewis, vice chair.
Second.
Any other nominations? Nominations will be closed. All those in favor? Fora.
Well, congratulations to our new board chair, Mike Coward, and to our new vice chair, Delaine Lewis. We look forward to working with you. Y'all provided excellent leadership last year, and so we look forward to 2016. Thank you for serving.
Thank you.
Yeah. Next up will be student recognition. Pickens County Middle School.
We have some to recognize.
It is my pleasure tonight to recognize Emma Long for some FFA achievements. Emma, if you would come on up and stand up here while I talk about you, please. Mr. Dobson could not be here tonight. He's at a CTA State Teachers Conference. But let me just tell you a little bit about Emma. She is the PCMS FFA Chapter President. In October, at the Georgia National Fair, she was able to accomplish a goal that she set for herself a long time ago, and since third grade, I think, when she started showing lambs. And she was awarded the top spot at the Georgia National Fair by being named the Market Lamb Showmanship Champion for 2016. So she is a state champion. She has had a phenomenal year, and her best year yet, showing lambs. Emma has competed in fifteen market lamb shows this year, from Calhoun to Cleveland and from Pickens all the way to Dustin, Alabama. She... Her journey began in the springtime with the selection and purchase of her lambs from farms in the surrounding area. Once they were at home in her barn, then she began the task of training and bonding with each one. And I have seen some of the pictures, and they are beautiful. So that was a whole nother task in itself, bonding with those animals. She has exhibited a total of eight sheep this summer and fall. Her accomplishments so far this year include eight first-place finishes in the showmanship along with four second-place finishes. For the second year in a row, she finished third among the junior exhibitors, that's first through eighth grade, in the Georgia Junior Livestock Association Points Circuit. In the market classes, she has had seven first-in-class finishes and ten second-in-class finishes. She had two grand champion finishes and one reserve grand champion finish, topped off, of course, by winning that state championship in Perry. So we are very, very proud of Emma. These accomplishments and hard work are well-deserved, and they have inspired her to pass on her knowledge and skills to other young people. But she wants to get a degree in agricultural education and become an ag teacher and a lamb judge and help judge lamb shows. Mr. Dobson asked that I deliver this message for him. Agriculture teachers serve as advisors to all of their students, and ever so often, a student comes along that a teacher can depend on to serve as an advisor to other students as well. Emma is that student. She sometimes gets asked for guidance more than he does, he says, and he completely trusts her livestock advice to those students. Fourteen years ago, Mr. Dobson had two students like Emma come through the middle school program. Now, one is in his fourth year of teaching ag at Okoni Middle School, and the other one just completed all of his requirements at Auburn University to become a veterinarian. And he sees nothing less than that in Emma's future. So tonight, I'm presenting Emma with a certificate for being named the 2016 State Champion in Lamb Showmanship and a certificate for being an outstanding FFA member.
Congratulations. You know, we have some... We have some young children here tonight. Could you give them just a little idea about what it's like, you know, getting an animal ready to show and... Yeah?
It's very fun. I will give you that. I think my favorite thing when showing a lamb isn't necessarily always winning, but also getting a chance to show your hard work and show what you've gotten to do. And I enjoy it very much.
What age did you start?
I started around third grade.
Okay. That's wonderful. We are... Thank you for doing an excellent job of representing Pickens County. We're proud of you. Will she be looking at his hands? And we have cupcakes. We love hearing ag teacher, too. We can help you in any way. You just let us know. We can all together. One more picture.
At the top level, that's a lot.
Next, we have some four-hundred from Jasper Elementary.
Hear me distinct? I'm not used to speaking into microphones, just using my loud voice. But I used to show lambs, too, like she did. I started much younger, when I was in kindergarten. But we quickly moved on to swine because none of my family ate lambs. So we ate a lot of bacon. And then later on into cows. So I thought that was neat. But tonight, I'd like to recognize some of our four-hers from Jasper Elementary and one from Hill City that, you know, showed off for Pickens County for us at the 2015 four-h North District Cloverleaf Competition in Blairsville. Eight students went from our district, seven of those being from Jasper Elementary and then one from, like I said, Hill City. The competition was fourth and fifth graders at Division One, and then it had like a sixth grade for Division Two. Four-H really starts in the fifth grade, but, you know, our fourth graders got to jump on it, and were able to compete with those fifth graders. So let's see. We have, from Jasper Elementary, I would also like to welcome Ms. Rachel Wiggington, our Pickens County Extension Agent, and Ms. Tracy Buckingham, our four-H advisor. They have a lot to do in this with their DPA projects, which is where they research a topic, and then they practice speaking and delivering their research to people. So from Jasper Elementary, we have a lot of first-place winners. We have Jordan Blankenship for his DPA project on dog care. Did I say it right, Jordan? Okay. For dog care, we have... And tonight, I'm presenting them with a certificate of recognition... Requisition. A certificate of achievement for their hard work. I'm just going to call your name, and you can come forward and get your certificate. Jordan Blankenship for her DPA project on dog care. And then Dylan Eaton for paleontology.
Jordan.
You stay for the picture.
Congratulations.
And then Brian Gonzalez for etymology. I don't think he came tonight. And then Elise Crisha for fruits, vegetables, and nuts, for fruits, vegetables, and nuts project. And then we got Connor Watson for his DPA project on health. There's Connor. And our other students didn't place first, but they were in the most competitive part of the project, with the horse project, where they research and talk about their... about horses. And so we had Isabella Lau for second place, and then Julie Carter with fourth place. And then from Hill City, we had Tyree Stewart. I believe he's placed third. Glad to congratulate all these four-hers.
Let's get the children in front of us. Jordan.
Jordan, just get in the picture, maybe. Get in the middle.
Tracy, come on. I heard you worked hard. Tracy worked very hard with her friends and their speeches and how to do a good presentation. Tracy, we can't see you.
We got it. Look, right there.
Put it right over my head.
There you go.
Starting from...
Wow. To two schools.
Next, we have recognition of our auto-wise goals.
Yes. Good evening, everyone, and board and members of the community here. We have, as you know, of our seven schools, six of them are Title I schools. And I'm happy to recognize two of them tonight as the 2016 Title I reward schools. But let me explain something to you. That recognition comes to schools... And by the way, this is with 2013-14 data. And what they say is that these schools must be in the top 10% of Title I schools. They also must have the highest three-year average progress scores, because these two schools that we have here are among the schools that have received the highest progress reward schools. The other category is highest performing. And so perhaps we'll move into that one pretty shortly, too. I'm happy to read to you, too, before I let you know which schools it is, a letter from superintendent, State Superintendent Richard Woods, that says, "Congratulations to you and your staff on being a Title I reward school. You have cast aside labels and created a school that is focused on student excellence and building strong communities. I know that you and your staff will not be satisfied until every student is succeeding at the highest levels in all areas. Thank you for all the hard work, long hours, and teachable moments. As we continue to personalize learning for all students in our state, schools like yours make me confident we will reach our goal of expanding educational opportunities for all students in Georgia. On behalf of the Georgia Department of Education and the State Board of Education, thank you and congratulations. We appreciate the hard work being done by you and your staff to meet the needs of your students and provide them with a quality educational experience. Congratulations on these outstanding results, and thank you for your success in educating Georgia's future." And so I hand these reward school certificates to Pickens County Middle School and to Jasper Middle School.
Thank you. That's what I was going to say. I keep saying even if it's award time. Yeah. Thank you.
That's true.
In the middle? Get in the middle.
Kind of like their elementary students.
Okay.
There you go. Thank you.
Chuck, take it.
We won't just share that one, will we? Okay. Next on the agenda is superintendent reports. First up will be Ms. Amy Smith, with her budget.
I'm going to say, I already know it's unlike Dr. Perry. That didn't say January.
I can't hear you. This paper had fourteen.
I can't hear you. Oh, okay.
I said, "I'm like Dr. Perry." That report was done January fourth. It should be 2016. I had not changed years yet, apparently, on my first day back. Bring you up to date on general fund. At the moment that we did this report, we were at 56.03% of our collection. Since then, we have received an additional $3 million. Just want to keep you in the loop, that top line. We received $1 million since then. We had some KVE funds we had not booked yet when we came back from the break, so I did want to let you know, we actually have received another $3 million, a little over $3 million since then. Trying to cram a few things in that first week we got back and didn't quite have everything ready to go, trying to get your enclose done. Overall, let's see. And on our budgeted expenditures, we're at 37.36% of our budgeted expenditures. I always want to remind you that this runs a couple of months behind for most of the staff salary benefits, which is our largest expenditure. This only reflects the expenditure for staff from September until December, so that's why that percentage is so low. We still watch it. We catch up in June, when we book the June, July, and August, all in one month, all in one week. So do y'all have any questions on this report?
Our Splosta account. We actually received two revenue deposits this month. $1,474.73 is just a residual. If they have someone who has paid a back paid overdue bill, basically, we get like a cleanup check once about every three months, so that's what the $1,400 is. Our regular revenue was $344,351.09, earned interest of $785.62, and had two checks there, as you can see. One was for projector systems for Tate Elementary. The other was for headphones, headsets, et cetera, at multiple schools. There was something at almost every location, so trying to break all that out, that was split up quite a bit, and that was less than $2,000, so I didn't get into too much detail on that one. Overall, at the end of December, we had $4,000,010,448.84 in our Splosta account. Do y'all have any questions on this report? Don't have a lot of activity right now. Of course, as our... As you can see, our 12-month average, we are still eking out just a little bit. We're glad to see that. You know, we have based most of our projections in the beginning on $300,000. So we brought that up to about $325,000 for FY16, so we're still maintaining, you know, $20,000 to $25,000 above that each month. Of course, they all have to go to those Splosta projects as defined in the referendum, but that does make us a little more comfortable as we're planning for some of these bigger events that are coming up in the future. Do y'all have any questions on this? That's all I have.
When do you anticipate that we'll start working together on the budget? I know you're already working now.
Right. No, we're already working on some things, you know, behind the scenes or on my end. Now, it's at the board and the superintendent's pleasure. We can begin to set up work sessions whenever y'all are ready. In the past, so I'll kind of give you an idea, we have started in January. We've started in February. The later we wait, the more we're trying to get in, really and truly, the intent of the state rules and regs are to have a tentative budget in place in June, so that when your New Year starts, July 1st, you have your budget ready to go, whether it's final or not, as long as you have a tentative budget. We miss that a little bit sometimes because of maybe some late information from the legislature or maybe, you know, tax digest sometimes comes a little later. But the earlier we get started, the more time we'll have to complete this, and the more thorough we can be. So it's at the pleasure of the board and superintendent. I would like a little bit of notice so that we have appropriate information ready, and so too, when we work with our departments and our staff, we have enough time to give them time to prepare all their reports. Although we've already sent out, hey, y'all know it's coming. Y'all go ahead and be penciling down your thoughts and your requests, so that when we get it into a more final format, it'll be ready for y'all. So February?
It is a long process.
Would February... Sometime in Feb... Could we set a date sometime in Feb? We don't have to set the date tonight, but we could pencil something out starting in February and have something at least once a month. Is that okay?
Yeah.
Why don't you give us the dates where you can be ready?
I can do that. No problem.
So tomorrow's too soon.
I can have you something penciled out tomorrow.
Can't start after lunch tomorrow?
Yeah.
I can have you something penciled out. I wouldn't be ready to present tomorrow, but...
Okay.
I want to be there.
Well, that's right.
I want to be there.
You can't start it without...
No. That wouldn't be nice.
While we're talking about setting those budget meetings, I would just like to remind everybody that those are public COVID meetings. So anybody who wants to come and settle tonight, we welcome you there.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Smith.
Thank you.
Next will be our attendance update with Shelley Cantrell.
Very glad to be here tonight to give this report. Ask Martha, she'll start with the dropout report first. We are now at 12 dropouts. So, do you have any questions about the dropout report? As always, we continue to seek to try to get the young ladies and the gentlemen who have left in other educational opportunities, as always, and we will continue to do that. And then the attendance report.
So you think we may be able to...
We're going to work on it. Yes, ma'am. We always work on it. All right. Congratulations to Jasper Elementary School. Come on up. David, wow. All right. We would like to highest student attendance award, and ninety... Ninety-six point... Let me get my copy here. Ninety-six point three-one, and this is something new. Come on up here, David. Don't be shy.
I love awards.
Okay. This is something that we do every month, and of course, Jasper Elementary, you need to go back and brag on your students and parents.
So you didn't tell him to prepare the song?
I didn't tell him.
Okay, yeah.
He'd have to do the dance, too.
Yes, the winner each month sings "Albamata."
So we would like to present you with the award. Also, there is an attendance banner that will go and will hang in front of your school. Oh, okay. Okay. So we do have a banner that we're going to present to you as well. Here she comes.
Oh, here she comes.
All right. Well, what we normally do is Sandy, if you and David will come up front, so we can take your picture. Sorry.
We just went to back and forth.
I'm impressed with the confidence.
The Tigers and the Bulldogs.
Why don't we try that?
Okay. So we'd like to congratulate again highest monthly school attendance award, Jasper Elementary School. Congratulations. And thank you, Sandy, for running to your car to get the banner.
A little short, fast. Thank you.
Also, just to let you know, we do calculate the six or more. We look at those numbers now instead of the 15 or more, since we're all CC-RPIs instead of AYP, and looking at our numbers. We are approximately about 50 students less than we were this time last year, so that's good. Also, I was looking at percentage across the board. Several of our schools were looking at higher percentages as compared to this time last year, and looking just briefly, because I do look... I do keep a tally of looking at average daily attendance across the board, because that just means, you know, we get our students are there more and they're in school. Very proud Jasper Elementary for the past five months. Four of those months, they have had higher average daily attendance than last year. Hill Harmony has had two months that were higher than last year. Hill City, two months. We've also had Tate with two months higher than last year. Jasper Middle School, four months higher than last year. And Pickens High School several months. So, and then PCMS, also, we've had a month there. So I want to say, you know, across the board, even though sometimes, you know, ADA, even if it's just a few percentages, our schools are really... They're looking good. Staff attendance, we're going to talk about that now. And I would like to thank all the students and teachers and parents on working on attendance.
Get ready for three times.
Well, he's going to get his bubble bursted this time. Whoa, no, 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 no.
And thank you, Sandy, for running to your car to get the banner.
A little short, fast, let me show you. Thank you.
Also, just to let you know, we do calculate the six or more. We look at those numbers now instead of the fifteen or more, since we're all CCRPI instead of AYP, and looking at our numbers. We are approximately about fifty students less than we were this time last year. So that's good. Also, I was looking at percentage across the board. Several of our schools were looking at higher percentages as compared to this time last year. And looking just briefly, because I do look, I do keep a tally of looking at average daily attendance across the board, because that just means, you know, we've got, our students are there more and they're in school. Very proud Jasper Elementary for the past five months. Four of those months, they have had higher average daily attendance than last year. Hill Harmony has had two months that were higher than last year. Hill City, two months. We've also had Tate with two months higher than last year. Jasper Middle School, four months higher than last year. And Pickens High School several months. So, and then PCMS, also, we've had a month there. So I want to say, you know, across the board, even though sometimes, you know, ADA, even if it's just a few percentages, our schools are really, they're looking good. Staff attendance, we're gonna talk about that now. And I would like to thank all the students and teachers and parents on working on attendance.
Get ready for three times.
Well, he's gonna get his bubble bursted this week. Whoa, no, 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 no. Dr. Chris Lemieux. Pickens High School. Ninety-seven point eight-five percent.
Those faculty lock-ins are working well.
Oh, so congratulations.
This is not a lively group.
Please take this back, recognize your staff, tell them how much, how very proud the board and certainly we are for their high attendance award. Anything you'd like to say?
No, we've talked about, I got a handful of my teachers here, we've talked about how we've been second, so this is really good news. So we'll make sure we get this to everybody. So thank you all so much. I appreciate y'all. Thank you.
If they think it doesn't make a difference on this, maybe one person will be the difference between Jasper.
I tried to make it every day.
Any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we'll have our operations and construction update. Stacy Gill.
Good evening. Good evening. Maintenance, right now, our biggest problem are roof leaks with all this hard rain. You noticed that one area at the gymnasium at the high school we're working on, but I promise you, I'm trying to get that one straightened out. It's a big mess. But other than that, it's pretty normal heat and things like that on these cold days. We always have something not working. My office has averaged sixty-one degrees this week, so.
If you've been called out, I have too.
So we're working on this stuff as hard as we can. A lot of, a lot of my guys been out off and on a couple of days with this croup thing that's going on, so that's really killed us in getting some of this stuff done. Transportation, I'm excited, we got a class coming up, the twenty-fifth through the twenty-ninth. When I sent this out, we had nine trainees signed up. We had moved the banner bus down to the high school parking lot, which I thought, eh, I don't know about this. We picked up seven people out of that. So we've got eleven trainings going on this month, which is great. If we can keep half of them, it's a big benefit. And that's what we'll shoot for. Over Christmas break, we brought every single bus in, cleaned the inside, disinfected it, and sprayed them for mold. Now, that's a job, but they're done and it makes us feel better with the flu season rolling in, and I think it'll help us on that end of that. Our fleet's fixing to be swamped. We have, every bus will be inspected by the state DOT in twelve weeks. And this is a major inspection. This is one that we really want to do well in. And Tracy's got to go this year. We were ranked in the top four last year, and he says we want one, number one. He's not settling for less. So we're, now that we're fully staffed with our, with our guys, we started early and we're gonna try to get these things, you know, all the little things taken care of. But one little piece of, one little piece of reflective tape can get you written up. So this is real critical inspection, and we want to do good at it. They're excited. Security says we had four arrests at the high school, one simple battery, sexual, one sexual battery, disorderly conduct, and a runaway. At Truancy, we had six citations, one juvenile complaint, four subpoenas. Had a vehicle accident at the campus and high school. They used the dogs to do some searching this, this month. They searched one hundred and twenty-three vehicles at the high school and twenty-four classrooms. And at Pickens Middle School, they hit on two hundred and twenty lockers with everything. Coming out pretty good, so I was excited about that. But that's it, short and sweet this week. Anything else? Thank you.
Thank you, Stacy. Next, we'll have our athletic update with Chris Park.
All right, we're, you know, we're into our winter season here and got our spring sports coming in. And what we talked about in leadership meeting and all is, you know, the logistical issues that come up with many spring sports. You know, we got a lot of buses going out at the same time and a lot of administration coverage and things like that. So trying to work on that. You know, we've gotten rolling our program a little bit and we're trying to have a, you know, kind of a theme for the month for our coaches. And our, you know, our theme for this month is, you know, we're trying to work on communication and promoting our program. So sending out some emails and working with the guys on communicating, and hopefully we're continuing to do that. Some of our student achievement this month, we had wrestling at high school and the middle schools competing in their area in state tournaments. And our, our middle school wrestling team finished eighth in the state, which is pretty impressive for our classification. And at our, on our varsity team, we had a young man, Kobe Milner, who won his hundredth match, which is a lot. We're probably recognizing him at the end of our wrestling season for several accomplishments. He's been a good ambassador for our, our programs and our community. We had our basketball programs out during the holidays since our last meeting. Working with the Salvation Army, collecting things for them and helping out in front of some of the stores in town. And, you know, I was excited to hear that. You know, sometimes we always talk about things happen on the field, but we got a lot of things happening off the field, too. Next week, with the Martin Luther King holiday, actually is the kickoff for all of our spring sports, so, for practice. So we've really got a busy time here coming up. Had a, had a meeting yesterday with our student council. We got a picture up there. Our student council had a couple of them absent, but that's, that was them. Really excited to work with these young people, head of coaches. These are people that we had from the beginning of the year that the coaches had nominated a couple of people per sport and had a chance to sit down with them and try to do it every month during our club time at the high school and, you know, get some feedback on them, what they thought, and we try to, you know, relay that stuff on to you guys. And we came up with a few different headings of things that all we felt like some of the sports could do by sport and then kind of lumped them together in the categories of, you know, fundraising and promoting the programs and building feeder programs. And it's interesting to hear some of what they think we can do. So all that will come to you guys by the end of the year on what we feel like, you know, things they have suggested that are, that are doable or things that we, we could look into. So really excited to get a chance to work with them. It was a good group of people. And we're continuing to attempt to build a similar kind of council with our community, which, which is something we're having to, we're still in the implementation phase of, but this has been a really nice addition to what we're trying to do. And then lastly, we just, with the internal process stuff, we're just evaluating our, our fall sports and trying to meet with what happened in the fall and what will be with our winter. We'll be reviewing and evaluating our winter sports as they finish and thinking of things we can do better for next year and trying to, you know, continuously improve, just like any organization. And, you know, we're open to any suggestions or ideas or try to be transparent, you know, parents, any kind of stakeholder has an opportunity or an option to call us, talk to us, and we should be able to explain to them, you know, why we're doing something or how we're doing it. They don't always have to agree, and maybe they won't agree, but it should be something that we, you know, we feel like this is something, this is our philosophy on this, this is how we're gonna do things. And, you know, we've had pretty good feedback from doing that. So hopefully that will continue and look forward to kind of building every month through our, kind of having a philosophy of our play with our athletes and with our coaches each month. And like I said, this month, we're trying to work on communication and promoting our programs and with technology, we're trying to get more things out and all that. So appreciate you guys, like always. Anything I can do, please let me know. Anybody got any questions?
I got a comment.
All right.
Haven't we been proud of our alumni?
Yes, we have.
This time, we had a couple of guys, Shannon and Jordan.
We did. Yeah, Jordan Shaw.
I think they have done tremendous.
Yeah, he's had the opportunity to go to the, in NFL, you know, to a combines, and he'll have a chance to be evaluated, to be drafted or picked up on an NFL team and.
Shannon's just been outstanding.
Yeah, Shannon Brooks was on all Big Ten team.
I know. I've never been a fan of Big Ten till this, I've been Big Ten till this year. I am this year.
He made me look like a pretty good football coach a few times, yeah. He's making them look like a good football coach now. But, you know, I tell you this, while we, you know, while I got everybody, he, when I saw him the other day and I talked to him, you know, I was really proud to hear that he, he had all As and one B. I think he had three As and a B in his four classes. And my comment to that was, I think that's a little better than he did in high school. But, but it was great, too. It's great that he's doing good in that part of it, too, because, you know, obviously he's not paying anything to go to school, which is just a blessing to everybody that's had students and their children they found to pay for. And he does seem to be taken seriously, and so hopefully football can help those guys as they get older. We got several guys, Tanner Brumby's the same thing at Mercer, Silas Lotte at Berry. And then we've got some people now at Reinhardt in track, and we've got some guys playing basketball and some, some ladies playing basketball around. And really excited about those guys, too, yeah. But we have gotten some good publicity there, I guess, yeah.
That was nice to hear, Pickens High School on ESPN.
Yeah, that's something.
Well, after they finally figured out he wasn't from Atlanta.
Right. Yeah, they figured out Pickens, they said, surely, Pickens County, how about that? No, we're very proud of, proud of him and proud of the development off the field, too, you know, proud, and proud of all the guys. We got some, you know, we got some people just going to college that played for us that we just check up on every now and then, real proud of them, too. Thank you, appreciate you saying that, Peggy. Thank you.
Thank you, Coach Parker. Next on the agenda is the action items. Now, Perry, you want to talk to us about the resolution declaring the results of the elections?
Mr. Landry, this is something, a formality that we have to go through.
It is.
Resolution to.
If y'all decide to issue bonds, we want to be able to validate bonds, and this is just part of the preliminary process. It'll be a part of that petition if we decide to go, if y'all decide to go with Ryan. But those are the numbers that the election superintendent's given us as far as the results.
I'm not gonna read the whole thing, but.
Really?
No, I'm not.
Basically, it says the East Splosh passed.
Right. I mean, basically, East Splosh passed, there were, total number of votes cast were twelve-hundred-and-twenty-nine. Number of votes cast for the re-imposition of the Splosh was seven-seventy-one, and the number of votes cast against the re-imposition of the Splosh was four-forty-five.
We had low turnout, but we are very grateful that it passed, because we really need to move forward with a lot of our facility plans, so thank you.
I hear a motion that we approve the resolution of election results.
I make a motion that we approve the resolution declaring the election results.
I have a motion of Mr. Long. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second, Ms. Andrews. Any discussion? All those in favor? Five of them. Next, we have the approval of our meeting schedule for the upcoming year.
I make a motion that we approve the board meeting schedule.
Second motion, and a second by Mr. Long. All those in favor? Five of them.
So everybody likes Thursday, six-thirty?
Everybody likes Thursday, six-thirty. Next, we have a resolution to, to close out the Tate Cafeteria and Kitchen. Everything has been paid in full, Ms. Smith? All done.
Do you have the last one to take?
Okay.
Cool.
So I hear a motion that we close out the construction of Tate Cafeteria and Kitchen.
I make a motion we close out the construction. Or we approve the resolution, I guess, for the completion of Tate Elementary Cafeteria project. Is that what we do?
Sounds good. Motion, we have a second.
Second.
Second by Mr. Bell. All those in favor? Five of them. Next, we have PHS Track Team out of State Field Trip.
Got our, the state of Georgia allows us to go to one, what's called an indoor track meet, you know, obviously, inside. And you can go to one a year, but there's not any in the state of Georgia, so they have to go. We got five athletes and a coach that are asking permission to attend an event in Birmingham a few weeks. This is a deal where they would not take a bus, parents would transport the kids, and it's not a cost the parents are paying for. But not being sure, that still fell under the realm of, they're gonna be representing Pickens High School, so we want to get it approved or answer any questions or tell us not to do it, you know? Just in the spirit of making sure we, we were letting people aware of what we were doing. But Coach Ford is our head boys track coach, is going to attend. And then there'll be five athletes and their parents who all are doing this at their cost and their transportation. Does that make sense?
Is there a date on this? Am I looking at this wrong, or do y'all say a date?
I think it's January twenty-ninth. If I didn't put that on there, it'd be my fault. Is it not on there, Mark?
Well, then it's your fault.
It's my fault, sorry. I learned a long time ago, the best thing you can say sometimes is it's your fault. If you're wrong, just say you're wrong. Don't try to argue, so I was wrong. I'm pretty sure it's the twenty-ninth, the Saturday, if that's a Saturday, I know it's that.
Okay, so they're not gonna miss any school, then?
No, I think they have to leave early on Friday.
Friday.
Is that right, Dr. Lemieux? Yes, sir, I think they have to leave.
Just leave early, okay.
And they would have to, they'd have to get out in a similar way that, you know, we would get out to attend maybe a baseball game or something like that. And so they would have to miss some school, yes. But the event is on that Saturday. I think they would have to check in that evening, Friday evening, and they have to leave early to get there. But, yeah, they would miss some school time, yes, ma'am.
I make a motion we approve it. So PHS Track Team, I'm staying too.
Andrews.
Tell them to run fast and jump high.
Right. And jump a long ways.
Long, yeah.
Okay. Well, motion made by Ms. Andrews, seconded by Ms. Lewis. All those in favor? Five of them.
Good luck.
Thank you, sir. Next, we have action item for approval of the minutes from the twelve-ten regular board meeting and the twelve-eighteen call board meeting.
I make a motion that we approve the minutes from the twelve-ten and twelve-eighteen two thousand fifty. Will pick?
I have a motion.
Second.
Second by Mr. Long. All those in favor? Five of them. Next, we have surplus materials.
Notice we have in here some playground equipment, climbing equipment? Is it in, in a condition that may, that we might get auctioned that?
It isn't. It's more like a piece of equipment, not the whole thing. It's just kind of been left over and where pieces have fallen off and been taken away. This is the remnants left.
It's John.
It's John.
John. I want us to just watch out for things that may be of interest or value to the community that they might be able to use. Thank you for that.
I'll make a motion that we approve the surplus. Second by Mr. Long. All those in favor? Five of them. Okay, now I'll make a motion that we go to executive session to discuss or deliberate upon the appointment, employment compensation, hiring, disciplinary action or dismissal, or periodic evaluation or rating of a public officer or employee, or to interview applicants for the position of superintendent. Discuss or vote to authorize negotiations to purchase, dispose of, or lease property authorized, ordering, and appraisal related to the acquisition or disposal of real estate entered into contract to purchase, dispose of, or lease property subject to approval in a subsequent public vote, or to enter into an option to purchase, dispose of, or lease real estate subject to approval in a subsequent public vote. And to consult and meet with legal counsel pertaining to pending or potential litigation, settlement claims, administrative proceedings, or other judicial actions brought or to be brought by or against the school district or officer or employee, or which officer or employee may be directly involved. I have a second.
Would you agree to that?
Yeah, no. Seconded by Ms. Lewis, I believe. All those in favor?
Five of them. Okay. A motion was made by myself, seconded by Mr. Long to end executive session at eight forty-five. There was, vote was five of them, there was no action taken. Next, I hear a motion to approve the minutes as read to us.
I make a motion we approve the executive minutes as read.
Second.
Motion made by Ms. Andrews, seconded by Mr. Bell. All those in favor? Five of them. Next, we have the approval of personnel. I think Dr. Perry is recommending personnel action report as presented.
Yes, please.
I make a motion we approve the personnel action report as presented.
Second.
Motion made, seconded by Mr. Long. All those in favor? Five of them. And next on the agenda is our amended portion of it, which is a boundary line agreement. I guess the short version, the way I understand it is, there was a boundary line that was one degree off.
The adjoining landowner has agreed to the, to the board's boundary, so they've agreed to our survey.
Right.
That's what the agreement is.
So the agreement is to go with the survey that we have.
Yes, based on our [inaudible].
Right. Okay. So I'll make a motion that we approve the boundary line agreement and allow, I guess, myself and Dr. Perry to sign off on it.
I second.
Seconded by Ms. Andrews. All those in favor? Five of them. Next on the agenda is board comments.
If, if we could, I'd like to get some direction from the board. We do have a Pickens High School scheduling meeting, a work session for the board, but for, for, for the board to have an opportunity to learn more about what the high school has, has learned in researching some scheduling methods that they use, processes that they use, like block scheduling, seven-period day, some of the others. I'd like to know what, what it is that the board would like to see come out of the meeting that we have scheduled on Wednesday, January the twentieth at six-thirty. You know, what, what kind of direction would, would you have for us? This is, this is a meeting where the high school has been worrying about this and the board, we are simply there to hear, you know, what it is that, that they have learned. So what would you, what would y'all like to see happen as a result?
Well, first I'd like to say, Chris, to you and your whole group that's been working on this, we appreciate the extensive work y'all put for, towards trying to gather this information. And I think we're all trying to familiarize ourselves with it. That when we're taking a look at this next Wednesday night, we want you and the group to be aware of the fact that we're looking to you to answer the questions. So if there are questions that come up, we're going to be sitting there like bums on lawn. Effective answers to come from your committee.
Right, because I mean, it is a board work session, so we have to follow all the Board of Education policies, which basically means, I guess, for point of order, I will, I will open the, the work session and then basically just turn it over to you to do your presentation. And then we'll go from there and then see if the board has any questions or comments or anything on it. That way everybody sort of knows the way we have to do it, but as a work session.
And I would like to know if you've run across some things, and I think you may have sent some stuff an email that I haven't yet gotten to, that if we have some information about the achievement, student achievement under the various scheduling systems and also graduation rates, if we have any statistical data to present in those areas, I think that we would find that helpful.
I think this is. But when we look at that too, we have to look at demographics. I mean, you know, are the demographics for the schools that you've looked at comparable to our demographics too? Because there might be a, a huge difference there, so therefore, you know, there could be a difference. And you're looking at four different models, I understand. Is that correct?
Yes, yes, ma'am.
So, and you, you expect to narrow that at some point?
Well, we, we, I think we narrowed it down to two that we're really looking at, and that's something that, but I want to look at the four that we researched.
Okay, so you're going to bring all that out in the meeting then?
Yes, ma'am.
And this is going to, this is going to take time.
Absolutely.
You know, this will, this will be new information and the audience, whoever is in the audience, we're going to need time to, to digest it. It's, it's kind of like when we're looking at the flexibility options that the state had. I mean, they're, those models are out there and as we, as we attended meetings and as we learned more than, than we understood. But when people come to a meeting, they don't have that background. And so, you know, we need to simplify as much as we can and remember that we don't have to do this all in one session. You know, this, this is a learning process, this is discovering what it is out there as much as we can learn about these models. And so I think we need to take our time in, in looking at it and, and not feel like we have to cover all of this in, in one session.
And I want to say what we've always said is that we're not making changes for next year, we're just looking at the research.
Thank you.
Any other comments? I only have one more. Just for the record, I just want all you fellow board members to know that I really enjoy working with you. I think each and every one of you brings something to the table that is of great value and importance to the people and the kids of Pickens County, and I'm honored to work with you.
We would like you too.
Now, I'm ready for that. Motion, you've been waiting.
You do have this. This is a really good article that's put together by the Georgia Partnership for Excellence in Education. This is timely, it's just coming out. And it's kind of a state of where we are, you know, just like the president gave the State of Union address, this is kind of a state of education's resonance, where we are in, with education in Georgia. I think you will find it very informative and it's a good synopsis of, of what's going on now, so we wanted to provide you a copy of that.
And don't forget your legislation, legislators are in session as we speak, starting now. So input into those legislators with your opinions is very important to speak out. There's a, a lot of input from folks outside of education. We need to be sure those of us inside education have our voices heard as well.
I want to make a motion.
Okay, I want to make a motion.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
A motion to adjourn?
Second.
Second, hit all those in favor?
We've got time to see the plate, y'all.